Good evening and thank you to everyone joining us online for our 2021 Meet the Candidates virtual forum. We appreciate you guys joining us as we get to hear from our candidates from the school board members. So tonight, we have six school board candidates that are running, and we are excited to hear more about them. I want to thank our volunteers who are here helping us, my chamber board, and Marty Hubble, who is our moderator and who is also a chamber board member of mine. So I appreciate all of you tuning in, and we're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie, and welcome, everyone, all of our candidates and those watching, to the Meet the Candidates night. We have six candidates for the Lebanon School Board. The qualifications for election must be a qualified elector in our area and a resident of the school district. There are, again, six candidates running for two spots. The format of the evening will be a 90-second opening statement. We will then begin a series of questions where the candidates will have 90 seconds to answer, and we will end with a two-minute closing statement. We will start off with the opening statements, and we have drawn numbers previously. Mr. Roy McCutcheon is first.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us. My name is Roy McCutcheon, and people in town know me as the person who owns the Black Barn. My father, a disabled 20-year Army veteran, retired in Lebanon in 1972, and I attended Lebanon City Schools from second grade through graduation in 1983. I went on to earn a Bachelor of Science degree in agriculture from the Ohio State University in 1988. In 1994, I moved back to Lebanon from Illinois to purchase the Black Barn. I married to Joanna, a graduate of Mississippi State University and the Cincinnati Police Academy. My son, Joseph, attended Lebanon City Schools K through 12 and graduated in 2009. He was very active in athletics in the ROTC program. I have two stepsons, Austin, a hydrogeologist, and Barrett, a major in the United States Marine Corps. All three of our boys are products of public education and college graduates. We have three grandchildren, McKenna, Mason, and Walker, and number four, Eileen Joanna, is expected to arrive in December, and we're going to call her Ellie Jo. I have become a candidate for school board because I believe in public education. John Adams, George Washington, and Thomas Jefferson believed that public education for all citizens was essential to the success of a permanent union. Public education is one of the few roads out of poverty. I'm a public product of--
Thank you, Mr. McCutcheon. Next, we have Mr. Matthew Warmeyer.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Matt Warmeyer. I'm running for school board as well. I'm a Lebanon native, so I moved down here in my senior year of high school. My dad's a retired state trooper, and that's how we got to this area. I currently work for General Mills. I'm a continuous improvement manager there, and a lot of that involves a lot of problem-solving and looking at different losses to try to make things better. My wife, Barbie, is also a Lebanon grad, class of '97. I was '98. But she runs a real estate team here in town. We have four kids, Brayden, AC, Bryson, and Brody, and stay heavily involved in the community. After my high school graduation, I attended the United States Naval Academy, graduated in 2002, and then went on to serve in the Navy, and then lateral transferred as a Marine Corps intelligence officer, and Barbie said it was time to come back home. So that's how we ended up back here. So really enjoy being involved. I literally just stopped the sideline of a youth-- or, excuse me, junior high football game, coaching, and so we have a ton of passion for this area and really looking forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warmeyer. Next is Mr. Brighton Smith.
Hi. My name is Brighton Smith, and I'm running to be your newest Lebanon School Board member. Some of you may recognize me from 2016 when I was your Trump victory campaign staffer in charge of Warren County but based here in Lebanon. I am happy that you all are watching because the issues that we're going to talk about tonight affect all of us. Whether you actively have a child attending the school district or not, it impacts our entire community. But let me tell you a little bit about myself. I am a Christian, a husband, a conservative, a Republican, a small business owner, and a law school grad. But most importantly, just like you, I'm a taxpayer and a concerned citizen, and I want to make sure that our schools are as strong as they can be for our students, for our staff, and for our community. My platform is simple. I want to fight for education, not indoctrination. I want to fight for parents' rights. I also want to fight for financial accountability, and I oppose special interests in education, common core in the federal takeover of education, as well as critical race theory and other divisive teachings in our schools. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, Ms. Jennifer Dalton.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Dalton. I'm running for Lebanon School Board. My husband, Tom, and I moved here 12 years ago with our three kids, and we moved to a nice farm in Lebanon, and that's part of the reason for choosing to move here. We really kind of fell in love with the downtown area, the community, the being able to be in a farm setting, and also to be so close to all the amenities for kids, especially here at the YMCA and the activities that they had. My kids went to Catholic school, and I'm often asked why I would want to run for the Lebanon School Board. And the reason being is that I've always been involved in education since moving here. I started out with a career with Johnson &amp; Johnson where I sold cardiovascular stents throughout the state of Wisconsin. And once I retired from that to move here and raise my three kids, I was involved with all sorts of advisory committees within the schools, and I saw a need this past year and a half for involvement in community education, and it's very important to me for the future of our kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. Next, we have Mr. Michael Markey.
Hello to our viewers online, and thanks for taking such an interest in our local politics. I'm Michael Markey, candidate for Lebanon City School Board. I've spent my whole life in education. I'm an educator myself. I teach biology at Wright State University, where I've been for over 15 years now. I teach at the undergraduate level for our program in biochemistry and molecular biology, the graduate level for our masters and PhD students, and I teach medical students at the Boonshoff School of Medicine. I maintain an active research program and direct the genomics core facility there. As a professional scientist, I believe that data should drive policy. The things I'll keep in mind while making any decision on the board is the well-being of our students. I'll listen to the stakeholders and listen to the data. The stakeholders are our families, our students, our staff. My two kids, my wife and I, have lived in the district for 13 years, and I look forward to talking to you more about my positions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markey. Last but not least, Mr. Michael Gliotti.
Thank you. You have six candidates to choose from in this election for our school board, and I think that speaks a lot about what is going on right now. I really believe that character is important this year, and you need to know your candidates. And in my opening statement, I'd like to tell you a little bit about me and my character. I'm accountable. I'm empathetic. I'm credible. I'm respectful, and I'm a listener. And in these times, I think we need to collaborate. I really want to end divisiveness because divisiveness does not lead to productivity. If we have differences, I think it's okay, but let's build from where we have common ground on out, and we'll get somewhere. I really want you to consider voting for me because I am a relationship builder. I'm real. I have a sense of humor. That's helped me my entire life through business, through all types of different situations, and I know it will carry me forward in our school board. When things get tough, I have a proven history of staying, digging, and problem-solving. I've done that in business. I've done that in our Chamber of Commerce. I've done that in my family, and you better believe I would do that for our education system here in Lebanon as your school board representative. Thank you.
So we are going to move directly into the questions. Again, the questions have been provided to the candidates. The order was determined after the questions were submitted. They will go in order. We're going to start with Mr. Warmeyer. Mr. Warmeyer, how long have you lived in the Lebanon area? In what civic organizations have you served or supported in the area prior to running for elected office?
Sure. So, you know, as far as living in Lebanon, like I said, moved down here in my senior year of high school in 1998, and then really on and off for a couple of years while serving. We came back in roughly '08, and then basically recently have been here for about the last eight or nine years in town. So it's been nice to be back home. As far as some of the civic organizations, you know, again, like being involved and, you know, stay involved a bit with the Elks and the Masonic Lodge here in town. But quite honestly, most of where we're engaged are myself as a coach, so junior high football and lacrosse. I'm the treasurer for the boosters. You know, my kids, I help them. My oldest two started an organization called Varsity for Veterans where they partner up with Warren County Veteran Services and help veterans who can't maintain yards in the spring and fall. So we stay involved and a little bit in the shadows, you know, just trying to help out from that standpoint. But any chance we can get there, you know, even with various PTOs, Warrior Backpack, Bridges, things like that, we really like to help out there, and that's pretty much where my involvement comes from.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, how long have you lived in the Lebanon area? And what civic organizations have you served or supported in the area prior to running for this position?
Well, this question is actually a really exciting one for me because, like I mentioned in my opening, in 2016, I was the Trump campaign staffer in charge of the tire of Warren County, but I was based in Lebanon. And throughout that process, I got to know a lot of the people in the community and really fell in love with the area. At the time, I was living about 15 minutes down the road, and I'm really happy to say that after a very long home search, a lot of saving, my wife and I actually purchased our first home, our starter home, here in Lebanon about a year ago because this is the place that we want to settle down roots and grow our family. As far as civic organizations, I've been involved with Elizabeth New Life Center, the Warren County Right to Life. I sit on the Warren County Republican Party Executive Committee, and although it's not a local organization, I'm an NRA member, and I've also helped out a lot of local candidates here in town, mostly behind the scenes. I've been, you know, someone who's not very flashy, but that's pretty much what I've been involved with here, and I'm really happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Dalton, same question. How long have you lived in the Lebanon area? In what civic organizations have you served or supported in this area prior to running for elected office?
We have lived in Lebanon since 2010, and what brought us to Lebanon is the warm and welcoming community and the people that have been so helpful in kind of getting us acclimated to a brand-new location. And the organizations that I've served on was a part of the school. I was on advisory committee, which is the equivalent of kind of their school board, and some of the projects I was in charge of would be teacher retention. I also worked on anti-bullying campaign that we developed a programming around and the effects of social media on children, which is a hot topic right now also. Along with donation drives through our church, I'm a member of the Kiwanis and also help women with the Elizabeth New Life Center. And then I also encourage my kids to be actively involved in service communities within their school also because I think that it's important that we just demonstrate to our generation, next generation, what we can do to help others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Michael Markey. Again, how long have you lived in the Lebanon area? And what civic organizations have you served or supported in this area prior to running for this position?
So my family and I have lived in Lebanon for 13 years, 14 this December. We built a house out in Sheikheran and love the area. As a family, we've participated in youth sports like Lebanon Lacrosse and Warrior Junior Golf. I've helped out with the girls' lacrosse practices some. I ran a game group for kids at Mulberry Street Books, which moved online because of COVID, but that's been about two years that that's been going on, and in fits and starts recently with the situation. But the-- let's see, I also helped found and organize the Warren County Board Game Club shortly after moving here, back when we still had Ivory Tower Games here in town. That's been meeting off and on here again as we recover from the pandemic quarantines and all that. I've helped out with Barry's PTO Fall Fest. I spoke at Career Day at Donovan. Finally, in a few weeks, I will be helping out with the Career Experiences class at our high school by hosting students at my laboratory so they can get a tour and a taste of a career in biological sciences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markey. Mr. Gliotti, how long have you lived in Lebanon? In what civic organizations have you served or supported prior to running for this position?
Yep. Thanks, Marty. I've had the pleasure of living here just about 20 years, and we absolutely love it. I've served four years on the Warren County State of Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Steering Committee where we work to keep organizations safer through education grants and programs. I'm still active there. It's my fifth year as a director here with the Chamber of Commerce. I led as vice president for a year and a half with the Chamber. I was the president for two years, and in this time, I've been the chair of the Safety Council. I led member recruiting for the board. Our board is large. We have 15 members, so I've had the pleasure of recruiting a number of those. I've supervised the modernization of the bylaws with help from Mr. Hubble there. And also, I've served on the Carriage Parade Planning Committee right through the Great Rain, the rainy parade. Yeah, that was one of mine. And anyhow, so the parade can only happen in good weather from now on. I've briefly served on the city planning committee as a business owner. I'm a platinum sponsor of the Athletic Boosters and try to help our schools anywhere I can, and my family and I strongly believe in serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gliotti. Mr. McCutcheon, how long have you lived in Lebanon? In what civic organizations have you served or supported prior to running for this position?
Thank you. I have lived in Lebanon for 44 of my 55 years. In the past year, I worked with the LHS boosters and the cheerleaders with three different fundraisers, and we raised over $23,000. I've worked with the Lebanon Alumni Association and have raised over $6,000 for scholarships. The Lebanon Alumni Association created the Roy and Joanna McCutcheon Scholarship, recognizing us for over 25 years for supporting our schools. I have worked with, donated to, or created fundraising programs with Lebanon Business and Professional Women, Lebanon Public Library, LM&amp;M Railroad, Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, Warrior Backpack Program, Lebanon Youth Baseball Spring and Fall Teams, Lebanon Centerville Girl Scouts, the Holbrook PTA when Holbrook was in existence, Donovan School Scarecrow Night, Warren County 4-H Clubs, Barry School Dances, LHS Homecoming Dances and Parades, After Prom Head Start Program, and we have donated or worked with just about every church and organization in town. We are involved in the Adopt a Park program in Lebanon and have planted the gazebo park in town for over 10 years. I've coached youth football. I coached youth football for four years and was a Cub Scout leader in two. What I'm most excited about, this Saturday, me and my spoiled rotten bulldog, Lady Beatrice, will be judging the Main Street Lebanon Pooch Parade.
Thank you, Mr. McCutcheon. We'll move on to our next question. First up will be Mr. Brighton Smith. Mr. Smith, what's the most important issue that you would address if elected to our school board?
Well, I think that would be maintaining a healthy budget for our district while making sure that we don't sacrifice educational quality. If you look back to 2019, our school district was the fourth lowest school district as far as per student expenditure in the state at roughly $10,000 per student. Now, that's a good thing for our taxpayers. It means that our school district is very frugal and is being careful with taxpayer money. However, what that also means is that it puts a lot of responsibility on our school district to be very, very careful. And, you know, if you looked back at our-- I think one of the important things that we need to do is make sure that we reach out to our entire community of taxpayers and unite and rally our taxpayer base and our business base around our schools to make sure that we are all, you know, supporting our schools and making sure that our schools are something that we can be proud of. Looking forward to our future, I believe the February 2021 budget forecast says that our school district's budget will go up to $69 million by 2025 with a $6 million budget shortfall. That is critical, and that's something that we have to address, and I want to help our schools reach out to our community, to unite our community around our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Dalton, same question. What's the most important issue that you would address if elected to this position?
Yes. I may recommend some issues, but I would probably talk with the superintendent and the entire board to ultimately set an agenda because I think that it's a combination of everyone's interest to determine what's the most important. But I think, based on what's currently happening within our schools, safety, medical freedom, along with CRT are topics that will probably be addressed in the 2021 school year. I think we ultimately need to instill community confidence within our schools in order to gain future support, whether it's current involvement in the schools or future tax levies. We need to make sure that we are producing the highest-quality students, both academically and career readiness, and also just good overall kids that will be living in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Markey, what is the most important issue that you would address if elected to our school board?
So I feel like the most urgent issue we're facing is clearly the ongoing global pandemic, and we can talk about that in some more detail. But the most important issue after that one is the one that'll seemingly always be here, and that's funding. So in the state of Ohio, schools are funded in large part by operating in emergency levies. The courts tried to get that changed back in 1997, but it's still the case that the property values increase school funding and vice versa. About half of our funding comes from levies here in Lebanon and about one-third from funding from the state. Various other sources make up the difference, like public utilities and public utility taxes and grants. So the financial health of our district is great as long as we keep up the levies. One problem with this is that the emergency levies can't increase in revenue they bring in, even if property values increase or we add additional housing. At the same time, the projected expenses for running schools goes up over time. I believe the largest current levy is due for another vote in 2022. So keeping our district financially robust is going to be an ongoing challenge, and I think that's probably the most important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Markey. Mr. Gliotti, what is the most important issue that you would address?
Oh, thank you. In preparing for this question, I wanted to do research. It seems like everyone's a researcher these days. But as a potential member of the Board of Education, I want to be educated on everything that I speak to, and I'd like to give you four concerns. The first is COVID management, of course, respecting all the opinions that are out there of our students, teachers, and communities, and keeping in-person learning happening. The second one is finances. As mentioned, we need to understand the future while we balance our day-to-day needs appropriately. The third one is growth. We have imminent growth coming to our district, and that's both exciting and a challenge. Now, the concern is our data that we have to understand, our facilities, staffing, even lunches. All these impacts is 10 years old, so we need to look at that information and update it so we can begin planning for the imminent future and the attraction and retention of talent. I've spoken to teachers, and they tell me we lose some staff sometimes to other districts. I've known that we've lost some students to other districts. We need to attract and keep our talent here, and as your school board member, I will be accountable to work through these issues, find real solutions, and produce real results, and that's why I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCutcheon, what is the most important issue that you would address if elected to the school board?
Well, I would agree with everyone on school finance and the rapid growth that Lebanon is getting ready to experience. Several housing developments were announced this past summer, and a large multifamily condominium project is under construction right now. Once finished, these projects could increase school enrollment by 1,000 students or 20%. Currently, we spend around $7,500 to $8,000 per student per year. That it would be an additional $7.5 million into our school funding. But right now is the time that we need to work with developers and demand impact fees. And impact fees are charges that the school applies to developers to help offset the cost to taxpayers of what's getting ready to happen. The meetings are happening right now, and we must have school board members that can look into the future and see how decisions today affect us all in the future. Two years ago, the main issue at the meeting of the Candidates Night was school funding and taxes, and it still is today. Another issue I would-- I've been hearing a lot about is community involvement. I'm hearing people say I don't feel like I'm connected to the schools anymore. One of the things I'd like to go back to is paper schedules and mailers. Not everything has to be emailed and on a webpage.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warmeyer, what is the most important issue that you would address if elected as a school board member?
So the biggest issue, more of a theme for me, is making Lebanon more competitive again as a district. You know, when you look at the different facets that make that up, when it comes to compensation and where our staff sits, even just compared to Warren County, and I know we have a great district, but we need to attract and continue to keep, you know, the talent that we get here in the community. From a facility standpoint, that's been brought up. I just left the varsity football field, and two Lebanon taxpayer fans are sitting in wheelchairs that are pushed out onto the track because that's the best place to see, because there's nowhere in the stands unless you want to push them all the way down to the far north end to a basically tacked-on ADA platform. We need to invest in those things. Some of those have been the same things that when I was here in '98. From a program standpoint, you know, very passionate about that, I want people to know in Lebanon, you can get a great education and keep people in Lebanon. I sit on Congressman Shabid's Service Academy Review Board every fall, and I see the kids that come from Lebanon and interview them, and they're top-notch, and plenty of other kids, too. And even on the manufacturing side, the kids with skilled trades that come in. We have a great district, but we need to be more competitive. Looking at where we stand with even some of the other ECC schools of our new conference, you know, we're behind, and we need to get there. We need to be more competitive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to our next question. Ms. Dalton, you are first. Our school board recently voted for a temporary mask mandate in the district. If you were presented with this vote, what would your vote have been and why?
I was at that meeting, and I heard the testimony of a number of parents and teachers and bus drivers that all shared their experiences with the masks. And I also reviewed the results of the survey that was taken about four to five weeks before that meeting where parents were surveyed as to what they thought was best for their kids in a learning environment. And I thought that the school board and the school offered a very good solution to that by providing a classroom that was a masked classroom and then giving other students and parents the option to make a choice based on their medical needs. And it seemed logical and made common sense. When the mask mandate was determined, I think that there was some confusion among parents and students that perhaps it wasn't as logical. There was masks in school when kids were six feet apart, but not necessarily when they were in extracurricular activities. So there wasn't a great understanding as to why this made sense. And I think, based on looking at other schools around the state, that I-- on looking at other schools around the state, that I would have voted against a mask mandate.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Markey, same question. How would you have voted on the temporary mask mandate issue and why?
So I would have voted in favor of the mask mandate. Wearing a mask is an easy precaution that we can take, that we know reduces our chances of spreading the disease. That's already killed over 700,000 Americans and over 22,000 people here in Ohio. Schools rely on bringing us together face-to-face. I think that's what every one of us wants, so we have to do that as safely as we're able to. And masking works. The CDC has observed that COVID-19 outbreaks are far less likely in schools that require students and staff to wear masks. They're still recommending universal indoor masking in schools. That's what our public universities and a lot of our K-12 schools are doing. You can look at data from the CDC, from the World Health Organization, or right here in our community. In Lebanon, our weekly total COVID cases in our schools fell dramatically, almost in half the week that we implemented masking. The number of students in quarantine fell by over three-quarters. Especially when our kids under 12 can't yet get vaccinated, masks are probably the best way we have to decrease the spread of disease. With the goal of keeping our kids in school, masks are the way to go. So that said, I'm very interested to see the results of this test-to-stay quarantine pilot project in Warren County. I was just talking to Thermo Fisher Scientific. There's another program called Ready, Check, Go that some other schools are using. So between programs like these, I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to strike a happy medium between mask mandates and safety for our community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gliotti, how would you have voted on the temporary mask requirement and why?
Marty, that was a very difficult night. I was at that board meeting. Personally, my kids don't do well with online learning. As a parent of two, we chose to only mask our kids when it was absolutely required, and I really dislike masks because they take away much of the humanity we use to communicate and make decisions. I'm also resistant to the government imposing its own will on us without due process. However, my strong desire is that the parents get to make decisions regarding our children, but we must have in-person schooling. So all said, our local school board really only had two options. The options included closing with an indefinite closure or going to masks and the protocols that we did. And I commend our board. It was a difficult decision. They made the best decision with the options available at that time. And since that time, we have some new options, which is even better. But I believe I would have voted right with the board, and I think that they did the best that they could with the information and options, the only options that they had to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCutcheon, same question. If you were presented with the vote on a temporary mask mandate, what would your vote have been and why?
I would have voted yes, and I recognize that everyone has made up their minds about how they feel, and I respect your right to advocate for your child. And I don't like masks. The Ohio Department of Health and the Warren County Health Department created a COVID quarantine guideline policy that put schools in a very difficult spot. I knew our schools would be having hundreds of healthy kids sent home if mask-wearing was optional, and that is exactly what happened. There were two choices and two choices only. A temporary mask mandate or close the schools, and we must keep our schools open. And let's give credit where credit is due. Lebanon City Schools was one of the few districts that opened with in-class instruction last year. This year, mask-only classrooms were created when a parent came to a board meeting and presented the idea. We must be respectful to students and staff that are at risk from this virus. It is important that we listen to the experts on the issues, and at the same time, listen to parents who are advocating for their children. I will meet our toughest challenges by listening to everyone's ideas and focusing on consensus with the respect and thoughtful consideration that you all deserve. Lebanon schools are now part of a pilot program in Ohio concerning quarantine guidelines, and that occurred when parents and administrations worked together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warmeyer, how would you have voted on the temporary mask mandate and why?
Yep. So like many others, I was there at the board meeting that night. And probably just first and foremost, I don't think it was one of Lebanon's finer nights. You know, I realize this is a very intense and passionate topic, but the civilness, I think, and the respect factor is still a big part of what needs to be part of this community in this district. That being said, though, in that situation, based on the circumstances, I would have voted yes for the board to have masks, and for this reason. At the end of the day, you know, the mission of this is to keep kids in school, or excuse me, to educate kids. So if that's the mission, in order to do that, we need to keep kids in school. In order to keep kids in school, per the guidelines at this point, the decision that we need to make is to wear masks. And so that being said, you know, I think the right decision was made. Our kids, you know, that decision affects my four kids at home, and they don't like masks, and I don't get it sometimes either because half the time we're picking up masks off the floor or off the car, you know, and it's like, man, you're going to put that on your face. But that's what we have to do right now. So it's an important decision. I know it's a heavy weight on the shoulders of the board, and I know more will come with that situation, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, same question. How would you have voted on the temporary mask mandate and why?
Well, I don't think it will come as any surprise to anybody that I definitely would have voted no. I've been on the forefront of this issue from the start of my campaign, and I definitely understand the difficult position that the school district was in, as well as the superintendent, and I do not want for my answer anyway to be construed as coming down on them for what they did. But I am neither for masks nor against masks. What I am for is for the ability of parents to make that choice for themselves, and also for students to make that choice for themselves. I think that the only safe, scientific, and thoughtful approach to this issue is to allow and empower people to make the decisions that are best for them in their medical situations. And I believe that's something that our entire school district, for the most part, agrees on. At the beginning of the year, when masks were optional, it was reported by our school district and WCPO that 75% of our students chose not to wear masks. So again, I would have voted no on this, and I believe that that's something that our community would be willing to stand by. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markey, we're going to start with you for our next question. What life and/or work experience do you feel qualifies you to run for the school board?
So I'm a parent of two children who've been in the Lebanon City School District their whole lives. My daughter's at the junior high school and in advanced math at the high school, as well as CCP classes for English language arts. My son's currently at Berry. All their friends go to Lebanon City Schools. All my friends' kids go to Lebanon City Schools. I want nothing but success for this district. At the same time, and I'm an educator myself, so I've been at Wright State since 2006, and in addition to carrying out research projects there, I teach undergraduates, graduate students, and medical students. I've been a thesis director or committee member to over 50 students. I've mentored high school students through the NIDDK Short Term Education Program for Underrepresented Persons, and others through a high school STEM mentor program called Wright Scholars. I've helped with a biomedical training program for underrepresented minorities, and volunteered as a judge for the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair, as well as local science fairs. School has been such a part of my life that I joke I never left it, and I think my experiences make me a good match for this position on the Lebanon City School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gliotti, what life and/or work experience do you feel qualifies you to run for this position?
Marty, I've got a Facebook page that has a very detailed why statement out there, but I'd like to hit a couple highlights. I'm the grandson of an Italian immigrant family that did not speak English when they came here to the United States. They sacrificed everything to get an education for my dad. My dad not only did that, but he got a master's degree in electrical engineering from Ohio State. He then took that education and served our country by working with the United States Air Force his entire career. Unfortunately, last March, he did pass away, but not before he taught me the value of education. My mom stayed home until junior high, making sure that my sister and my education happened. It was a must-have, must-happen. Nowadays, I'm a dad. I have two children right here in our Lebanon School District. I'm a business owner. I've been a manager for 30 years in corporation and now in my own companies. I'm also a husband. Most importantly, I think right now, I might want to stress, I'm not a politician. No one is funding me, and I'm not influenced by any group. As your school board representative, I'm here to serve our children, our faculty and staff, and this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCutcheon, same question. What life and/or work experience that you have feel helped you to where you think you can run for this position and serve in this position?
Thank you. One of the main roles of a school board member is to represent the great citizens of this community and reflect their vision regarding the school and its students. My life experience is Lebanon. I was raised here, educated here, invested here, and am the product of Lebanon and Lebanon City Schools. I know the community, and my community knows me. My work experience is unique. While attending college, I was an Ohio Senate staffer, working for Senator Richard Finan. I was introduced to the value of public service and the importance it holds in a community. I've spent my professional life adhering to the goal of becoming a positive member of Lebanon. I was 28 years old when I bought the Black Barn, and in that time, I have learned to listen, acknowledge, and problem-solve. A successful business owner must be proactive, addressing problems well in advance and correcting course when needed. I also believe I have earned the trust of the community. I'm known as a hard-working man of integrity that has consistently supported our schools. These are the skills I bring to this position.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warmeyer, same question. What life and work experience do you feel qualifies you to serve in this position on the school board?
Yeah, for me, you know, from a skill set standpoint, you know, I'm lucky to have the role I do, working with General Mills as a continuous improvement manager. It's given me a lot of opportunity, like I said, from a process improvement standpoint, or we work on cost-saving projects, things like that. And I know as a school board, those types of things will come up, and being able to work with a team will be very important and will be a big asset when it comes to those. However, I think my biggest attribute are the deep roots that we have in this town, and genuinely the vested interest with our four kids in this district. And to me, that is the utmost important factor in running for this school board position. You know, and it's not just about seeing them doing well and what works, you know, for them. It is this whole district. You know, I love that teachers I have are still teaching my kids, or running into teachers who are retired out in town, and the friendships we have with teachers and staff here in the community really has had a great impact on our life, and that is where my genuine interest comes from. From our business standpoint, as well with our real estate team, supporting the community in different give-back programs that we do, and just genuine interest in making Lebanon better as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, same question. What life and work experiences do you have that makes you feel you qualify to be on our school board?
Well, my educational background as a law school grad has given me the skills and training in the important area of advocacy. One of the essential roles of a school board member is to advocate on behalf of our school district, the students, and the community. And I believe that I can help our school district in that regard. I also have work experience in the area of management. As a small business owner, something I'm very proud of, but also, as I mentioned before, back in 2016, when I was a staffer for the Trump campaign, I was in charge of the entire county, but I was based here in Lebanon. And as a part of that job, I had the awesome opportunity to knock on thousands of doors and make thousands of phone calls around our community, and really get to know the people of our community, what their values are, what they cherish, what their priorities are. And I want to continue doing that on the school board. And then from a personal standpoint, my parents immigrated to this country with hopes of achieving their American dream. They came here for work and educational opportunities before I was even born. If it wasn't for educational opportunity in this country, I probably wouldn't even exist. So it's imparted on me for my entire life, a special appreciation for the American dream and how educational opportunity plays an essential role in achieving that dream. And I want to bring that vision forward to our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dalton, you as well. What life and work experience do you have that qualifies you to be our school board member?
Yes, my career prior to kids was I was a medical device rep, selling cardiovascular stents to surgeons in hospitals. So I had to be very up-to-date on all the current studies and procedures, and always be doing lots of research. I had to have the utmost in ethics and integrity when I had that position. I retired from that position to raise my kids, and since then, I have three teenage kids, one that is in college now, but I have been very involved in their school academically, in sports, in clubs, in parent-teachers organizations, in different committees since then, which has given me a broad understanding of what parents are looking for within schools. I also just talk to lots of moms at all of these events, and I want to hear from them, and I want to hear from everyone in the community on what they're looking for to make their schools better and to give our kids the best opportunity in the future. So those are the reasons why I am running. I have the time now to do it, and I would like to just give back to the community. Thanks.
Thank you. We will move on to our next question, and I believe, Mr. Gliotti, you will lead us off here. Thank you, sir. How do you intend to address local concerns regarding critical race theory? And what do you see as the role of a Lebanon school board member in addressing those issues?
This one's easy, Marty. Critical race theory is a buzzword, everybody, to create unrest and division. I attended a school board meeting recently where one of our own high school teachers addressed the entire audience and said she was concerned about the issues that were coming from critical race theory, and she was there to inform us that it's not taught in our schools, it's not part of the curriculum. And we do teach students that there are plenty of subjects that are not in our curriculum, and they can investigate those on their own time, but critical race theory is not part of our curriculum. So again, as part of my commitment as being a potential board member for you, I did some more research, and I met with our superintendent, and he confirmed with me that critical race theory is not only not taught in Lebanon schools, not part of our curriculum, it's not part of the state's curriculum. We're not aware of a single school district in the state of Ohio that's teaching it, or in Kentucky, or in Indiana, and it won't be taught here. So I think that's one of those divisive terms that we need to realize. CRT is a buzzword to create unrest and division, and it's not taught here, it's a non-issue here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCutcheon, how do you intend to address local concerns regarding critical race theory? And what do you see as the role of the school board in addressing those issues?
Thank you. I have also asked that question if our schools are instructing, teaching CRT, and I have been informed over and over and over again that they are not. So obviously, CRT would not have my support as an appropriate course being taught in the schools. There is no interest in the community for it even being taught. The curriculum of the Lebanon School is set by the state, and currently, the CRT is not on the approved curriculum. For those of you who want to know whether I'm for or against CRT, I am against it being taught in public schools. It's a social concept, it's controversial and counterproductive. It will not increase ACT or SAT scores, or improve state testing scores, or help a young person get into college. The purpose of our local community school is to teach essential academics, civility, and social... academics, civility, and social growth. When I raised my son, I felt like I had a relationship between the school and myself to raise a young person that could be a productive member of society. And CRT will not accomplish that. But I also agree with Mike, that it's not being taught, there's no interest in it being taught, and it will not be taught in our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Warmeyer, same question. How do you intend to address local concerns regarding CRT? And what do you see as the role as a Lebanon school board member to address those issues?
Yeah, being very transparent, I had to do a lot of research and have a lot of conversations on this, just not knowing a lot of the background, but, you know, probably just repeating a lot of the same stuff, that this was a concept in the late seventies that, you know, amongst kind of the law industry was a topic for them to talk about and discuss. You know, to the points made earlier, where it's not in any state curriculum. Obviously, there's no interest at our level in the Lebanon City School District for CRT. I would not entertain CRT at any point coming to Lebanon City Schools. To me, as far as the role of the Board of Education, it's more about what do we need to do to set our students up for success after high school? If they want to investigate that or take a class on that post-high school, so be it. But in the meantime, we're going to set them up for success, whether that's college, trades, anything else they want to do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith, same question. How do you intend to address local concerns regarding critical race theory? And what would your role be as a school board member to address those issues?
Well, again, I think this probably won't come as any surprise to anyone. Again, I've been at the forefront of this issue from the start of my campaign. My stance is I am completely opposed to critical race theory. I believe that critical race theory is not the answer to our country's racial challenges. Racial issues are complex, but CRT is just a shiny new version of a simple, old racist idea that certain people are born good or bad inherently because of their skin color. Certain people are born as oppressed or oppressors. Now, this bothers me especially for obvious reasons, but my wife is Caucasian, and I clearly am not. And I shudder to think at what would we do if our children, our future children, come home after being told that one side of their family is evil and the other side isn't. That's not something that any family should have to face. And it's the worst kind of identity politics that simply does not belong in our schools. I think that what we can do in order to allay fears over this, because they are truly justified in that in 2019, December of 2019, our school district did pass a policy that has elements of critical race theory in it, is that we have to let our parents know that we will work with them and with the curriculum director to ensure that critical race theory does not encroach into our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Dalton, how do you intend to address local concerns regarding critical race theory? And if elected, what would your role be as a school board member to address those issues?
Okay. Thank you for asking this question. It has been the number-one question I've got, as I've gone door-to-door, talking with people about what they feel about our schools today. And I feel critical race theory is a very broad label. It can take a lot of different avenues. And I would agree that there is very little critical race theory in Lebanon, and I think we need to keep it that way. Because if you look at what's happening south of us, is a few miles south of us, it's involved in schools quite heavily. I know that for a fact, because my kids have experienced this concept in the form of called social justice. So not just the term critical race theory, it can take a lot of different avenues, and it can also be subtle in the books that are selected for these kids. It's, I feel it's a real distraction from learning. I would rather have kids learning pro-American education, that history from primary sources, that solid history that hasn't been interpreted. And I think that as a school board member, we need to make sure that if education is nationalized, that we try to pick and choose what we want in that education for our community. Because I think this is a very pro-American, pro-capitalist community here. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Markey, same question. How do you intend to address local concerns regarding critical race theory? And what do you see as the role of a Lebanon school board member to address those issues?
So, critical race theory isn't taught in Lebanon City Schools, and it never has been. That's because it isn't part of Ohio K-12 curriculum. CRT is a kind of framework for thought experiments used mostly in law school. Basically, all it proposes is to think about the ways that law, society, and institutions are impacted by race. So why are people worked up about CRT? In July 2020, a conservative journalist named Christopher Ruffo decided that this law school exercise sounded scary enough to motivate voters. He wrote, and I'll quote, "Cancel culture is a vacuous term and doesn't translate into political programs. Woke is a good epithet, but it's too broad and too terminal, too easily brushed aside. Critical race theory is the perfect villain. This is someone farming outrage for political advantage. It is, however, important that we have honest discussions about American history in our schools, which does include our ugly past with racism. We do not want to go issuing guidelines that are meant to scare teachers away from discussions of race and American history. These issues still impact our nation today." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markey. We are going to start our final question of the night, and we'll begin with you, Mr. McCutcheon. Our area has a need for labor, and specifically skilled labor. Should our schools devote more resources to provide professional trade training for those students interested in starting a career path while in high school?
Thank you. This is the best question of the night.
I wrote it, so you're welcome.
This one is right up my alley. As many of you know, we do have the Warren County Career Center right here in Lebanon, a county vocational school that offers training and education in many skilled labor trades, including fire and rescue, cosmetology, nursing, police training, and many others. We also host classes for some of their offerings right here in the Lebanon High School, due to our great relationship with the Career Center. It works well, and our students, in many cases, are being effectively prepared for professional trades. But as a business owner in town, training and educating someone to do a job is just the first part. The next part is trying to teach professionalism, the desire to show up to work on time, the desire to even work. And I'm seeing that in my business as well. We need to have, go back to teaching kids that they should be contributing members of the society once they're out of school. The challenges of a business owner is just trying to find help. It's not that they're trained, it's just having them show up to work on time, not having a cellphone out all the time, inappropriate dress, wanting to leave early.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warmeyer, same question. With our need for labor in this area, should our schools devote more resources to provide professional trade training for those students who may want to start a different path while in high school?
Yeah, kind of. I'm going to take ten minutes on this one, so just hold on to those cards. Look, it's not just a Lebanon thing or problem, too, when it comes to skilled trade. You know, it's nationwide, and, you know, working in a manufacturing environment like I do, I work with these guys and gals every day, and it's a problem. And to the point where, you know, we'll bring people in, or really can't get people in that skilled trade industry, which is really tough. We are super fortunate to have the Career Center here in town, super fortunate. And what I would say is, I don't think it's so much devoting resources as changing the message about these skilled trades. You know, a lot of people ask, if you have a, I have a senior, you know, where's he going to college? Well, we've got to change that culture, because I'm telling you what, there are some great jobs out there and some great careers. And the fact that a seventeen, eighteen-year-old can get a hundred thousand dollar loan for an education in fill-in-the-blank, and can't get a thirty thousand dollar loan in order to maybe buy a truck and put a sign on the side of it and start a plumbing business or something like that with a apprenticeship, I think is a problem. So again, I think it's more about changing the messaging, that it's a good thing to go into these different industries, and it is a good thing to go to college. But the pressure and thinking that's just the right way is not the right messaging. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith, same question. Should our schools devote more resources to providing professional trade training for students interested in starting a career path while in high school?
Another exciting question for me. As a conservative, I think it's important for me to recognize that resources can come in different forms. And this is a topic on which our school district can partner with the community and with local businesses in a very positive way for our students. Perfect examples are like the Bunny Brooks Career Experience. And there's also a program going on with our school district right now, partnering with the Warren County Career Services Center, where students are able to find alternative paths to graduation and achieve certificates in career fields that they're interested in on their way to graduation. And that's a good thing. And I think we need to do more of that. Like I said, it's finding alternative sources and creative ways of funding these programs and supporting them. And it's important to me, because, as I mentioned before, my parents immigrated to this country for work and educational opportunities. And part of that meant that my father, who has built a very successful painting or modeling business, he did that with just a high school diploma. My mother, she has a successful law practice, and she did that, obviously, with a law degree. So it's important for us to reinforce for our students that there are different paths to the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dalton, should our schools devote more resources to provide professional trade training for those students interested in starting a career path while in high school?
I think Lebanon is very fortunate to have the Warren County Career Center so close, just around the corner from the school, actually. And so I would like to hear from the teachers and Mr. Severs, the superintendent, to find out what additional resources are needed for these students that are interested in various career paths. And I think that we also need to really focus, as a foundational level, on reading, writing, and arithmetic. Even if a student were deciding to go with a skills training, they need to know how to communicate well with their employer, and time management, and how to manage finances. And so I think that in addition to having that option, continuing education is so important in the workplace. So having that foundation is critical for these kids. So we don't want to look past reading, writing, and arithmetic in order to just get to a skill, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markey, same question. Should our schools be devoting more resources for those students that are interested in starting a trade in that career path while they're in high school?
So I recently met and talked with the directors of our Career Experience Program at the high school, and I found the program to be really impressive. It gives students experience, not just in professional settings, but also training in professionalism itself, which we all know is very important. In a couple weeks, I'm hosting some of those Career Experience students at my laboratory, and we'll take a look at what a career in clinical diagnostics or academic research might look like. But they get exposed to a lot of different fields as well, wherever their interests may lie. As a school board member, I'd love to continue supporting programs like that. Of course, budget's always a balancing act. So if we hear lots of interest for trade programs, then that's something we'd seriously have to look at from a budget standpoint. Another potential option for funding we could consider is corporate sponsorship. If, you know, can we get the businesses involved in education, like the question said? If we're in need of employees for local employers, can they help us out with this? I think this is also something we can discuss in collaboration with the Warren County Career Center, and that learning should go beyond the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gliotti, same question. Should our schools devote more resources in providing professional trade training for those students interested in starting a career path while in high school?
Yes. Thank you, Marty. No, just kidding. College isn't a good fit for everybody, right? And today, we all know there are fantastic careers available in the trades immediately, right from high school. There's a huge need for welders, plumbers, truck drivers, electricians, many, many more. I have a logistics company. I have two seventy thousand dollar jobs that are not filled for truck drivers. And the need for more time and money in these, in our schools, is imperative. I think that we have a start with our Career Experience classes. We have a start with our healthcare credentialing. We have other certifications that we have out there. But as Matt mentioned, the packaging of the skilled trades needs to be revised. And we do have a hidden gem right here in our own, in our own area, the Career Center. My daughter is a junior in the pre-nursing program, and you wouldn't believe the program and the skills that she's picking up to go right on out. So some of these tradespeople, as also mentioned, are going to form their own businesses, and hopefully they form some of their own businesses right here in Lebanon. It would be great. So in closing, as a school district, we need to continue to show our students these avenues exist, because I don't know how well marketed they are, and how important it is to engage with these trades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gliotti. Thank you, candidates. We have now concluded the question-and-answer portion of our program. Now, we're going to the closing statement portion. Each candidate will be given two minutes to provide us with a closing statement. Mr. Warmeyer, you are first, sir.
Thank you. So, yeah, in closing, if I wanted any voter to take away anything, I think this is a really exciting time, you know, for a school board election. We have a new superintendent. We have a new treasurer, a newer AD. You know, I can feel the passion with as involved as we are in the community with those new roles coming in. And that's why, again, I think this is a great time. And for myself, again, being genuinely invested, you know, the things I do in the community, or Barbie does, or the kids do, isn't for recognition, or isn't to say, well, we do this, and, you know, that'll help fit this, you know, agenda. We do because we care. We do because we want Lebanon to be better. We do because we want the district to be better. And so taking that into account, you know, at the end of the day, appreciate your vote November 2nd, but regardless, I'm still going to be coaching, I'm still going to be helping boosters, we're still going to be giving back to the community, and we're still going to be helping the community. So thank you again. Be Little Miami.
Thank you, sir. Brighton Smith?
Well, again, my name is Brighton Smith, and I hope that I have earned your vote and your trust to sit on Lebanon School Board. As I said at the beginning, my platform is very direct and very straightforward. I am fighting for education, not indoctrination. I believe that being a parent is difficult, and being a teacher is difficult. So let's not force our teachers to have to parent our students, and let's not force our parents to have to unteach the indoctrination that they learn in school. And along with that, I also support parents' rights. I believe that when it comes to things like masks, vaccines, that the choice should be on the family and the parents to make the decisions that are best for them. When it comes to finances, I also support financial accountability. I believe that we have a duty to make sure that we spend tax dollars wisely, and that we are accountable to taxpayers for every dollar that we spend. But there are some things that I have to oppose. I oppose special interest in education. I believe that those in our school administration and those on our board should not be able to profit from their influence and position. I also oppose common core and the federal takeover of education. I believe that education is a local issue, and that us, in our community, should be deciding what and how our children learn. And again, I also oppose critical race theory. I believe that equity is just a friendlier word for inequality, and what we truly need is equal opportunity. And that's what I support, and I hope that you will support me as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Jennifer Dalton.
Okay. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you all tonight, and thanks for all those. As I'm walking around, I met all different types of people, from police officers, to nurses, to military, to teachers, to students, and grandparents. And those are the people that I hope to represent on the school board. I have my experience for my own children's education. I feel that parents want to be in I feel that parents want to be involved in education, they want to make sure that their kids are going to come out loving this country, and they want education that's focused on moral character and civic virtue. They want the best quality education that you could get in foundational learning. They, I feel like they want our kids to want to engage in learning, and the concern is with CRT or political aspects that are brought into the classroom, that kids don't engage and pull away, and that affects their education. And so, I think the basic reason why I'm running is I want excellence in Lebanon schools for, the opportunity for all kids, because I think that there is a lot going for them here. There's a great family foundation, there's a great faith foundation, and we can build and continue to build a great city here in Lebanon. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Michael Markey.
First, I'd like to thank the audience again for their attention and for getting involved in local politics. I think all people should have a say in the things that concern them, and voting is a large part of how we achieve that. Early voting, by the way, is open now. You can stop by the Board of Elections during any of their posted hours and vote any time between now and November 2nd. If you've requested an absentee ballot, those should be coming shortly. So, vote, 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 tell your friends to vote. To summarize why I think I can be a good member of our school board, first of all, I'm personally invested in the success of Lebanon City Schools. My kids go to our public schools and always have. I'm a huge believer in public education. Our public schools are an institution we should cherish as Americans. We work together as communities, states, and a country to provide a high-quality education for every child. I'm a product of our public schools. Second, I'm familiar with education. Although I teach in a different context, I know teaching has its difficulties as well as its rewards. I want to keep communication open between the board and the staff of all of our schools. I know the difference it makes when the administration listens and works in collaboration with our staff. Lastly, I want what's best for our students. I want to see them flourish. I will try to always keep in mind that this is the goal we're working toward as a district. If you'd like to learn more about me, check out my campaign website, it's markeyforlcs.com. That's M-A-R-K-E-Y, the number four, lcs.com, or you can find me at Michael Markey for School Board on Facebook. I've posted a bunch of stuff there, so feel free to take a look and comment. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next is Michael Gliotti.
All right. I'd like to thank everyone for your attention and the opportunity. Just a couple things I want to say once again. I'm not a politician, no one is funding me, and I'm not influenced by any outside group. I'm a dad. I have two children in this school district. I have a vested interest here. Being your school board representative matters to me, and it matters for the right reasons. I'm the right choice for your vote because my motivation is simple and pure. It's service and sound decision-making for our students, staff, and community. I'll provide leadership, just like I was taught, with empathy, credibility, and accountability. My grandparents, my parents, helped me understand the importance of education. It's part of me today, and now I want to use my experience to help Lebanon schools. The time is right in my life, I have the time. If I've missed something, I'd like to ask you to please contact me via email or Facebook, and please follow me at Mike Gliotti for Lebanon Schools. I'd love to answer your questions. I hope my sincerity has shown through in my responses today, and again, my name is Mike Gliotti, and I'm asking for your vote now or on November 2nd, and I'd like to leave you with one more thing. If you give me the chance, I promise I will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Roy McCutcheon.
Thank you to the chamber and everyone for watching this evening. Although this event was held online, I will not be a virtual school board member. I am very active in the community and look forward to speaking with all of you face-to-face with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. During this campaign, I have not accepted any financial support from individuals or special interest groups, and have not asked for political endorsements. This is a job interview, and I'll be working for you, for our children, and this beautiful community. I pledge to you that I will listen to the concerns and ideas of the residents, be accessible and visible while advocating for a strong Lebanon school system. I will do this with respect, professionalism, and the courtesy that you deserve. Lebanon City Schools is one of the best districts in the state, doing more with less. We have fantastic teachers, great parental support, and businesses and individuals that work with students in many ways, and I am a proud Lebanon warrior. We have some serious issues confronting us in the near future. New housing developments will stretch our resources. We need forward-thinking and business-minded people on the board. I've looked at the numbers, crunched them. With the new homes proposed, the number of students that could be added will be, in 10 years, could increase our enrollment by 20% and add an additional 1,000 students. That's $7 million extra tax revenue. Impact fees, money charged to developers to offset the cost to taxpayers of new homes must be negotiated. My concern, no one's talking about the additional cost to taxpayers of these new developments and insisting that impact fees be discussed. Just as it's important, you must elect school board members who are proactive, not reactive, addressing real issues like the cost of the new developments. Thank you for your attention. I love you, Lebanon, and respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. That concludes the Meet the Candidates night for the Lebanon School Board. I would like to thank all of the candidates for answering our questions tonight, and I wish all of you the best of luck.